Okay, we'll call this meeting in order to Blackout County. Board of Supervisors, March nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Let's have roll call, please.
Layland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Treoka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Please join us in a moment of silence. Can you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on to item one, agenda received, is proposed or amended.
Second.
Any questions, comments on the agenda? All favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item number two is public comments, anybody like to speak to the board at this time, it's not a agenda item. Second time. Seeing none, we will move on to claims and payments, resolution A.
Claims for the county total three hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-six cents. That's three four three, eight one nine point four six, and everything seems to be in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, resolution B.
There are currently no claims for Country View at this time.
Sounds good. So, we don't need any action or nothing on that, Pete, just move on. Okay, item four is receiving project updates for department heads and/or elected officials. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. Brian Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. County roads are still, a lot of the gravel road's still in pretty rough condition, still a lot of wet spots. Crews were out with the graders and the trucks yesterday fixing some of the flood damage and repairing spreading rock and some of the drier areas that they could. They're out there continuing to work and will this week as long as, you know, conditions do allow them to. Have seen some minor damage from some of the flooding, nothing too large at this point, obviously we still have to wait for the water from the Cedar River to come down for some of those roads to see what kind of damage we do have.
Documenting all, but I'm assuming.
Yes, we are, and we have one staff member was out yesterday and he's out again today collecting information on all that.
Good. Morning evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Sheriff?
Morning.
Morning.
Um, yesterday Supervisor Layland and Schwartz participated in a phone conference with the emergency management board, as you are aware, when Frank Maxman retired, I was his vice chair on that commission and now I'm the chair. And so, we stood up, what I'll call a virtual emergency operations center a week ago Monday, and started providing what we're calling flash reports to all the administrators, you guys were all included in those beginning Monday, a week ago. Our operational periods were noon to noon, and so, we had several agencies outside of Blackout County, volunteer organizations, as well as administrations with the municipalities and county conservation, engineer's office, providing us with daily updates for the flood event, and then that meeting on Monday after, or Monday at noon, a week ago, we had planned on this phone conference yesterday being the decision point, based on forecast of whether or not we were going to stand up the actual emergency operations center. Obviously, things worked out very, very well, and when you make good plans, you don't need to execute, you know, your plans when things go well. So, what that phone call actually ended up being was more of an after-action review and and a good way to kind of touch base and make sure that we were firing on all cylinders and and it was a good way for us to see if the plans that we implemented are repeatable, if the way we started operating was refinable to a point where we were of value, the information that we're providing to the municipalities, to public works, to those folks that were actually boots on the ground, having impact. And it seems that this virtual concept of all the ESFs providing information and providing that on a daily basis was very, very effective for those that were impacted by the floods, and even those that weren't necessarily impacted but were making plans and were providing outsourcing and resourcing for folks that were. So, from an emergency management perspective, we were very much on top of it and we had a good weeks' worth of lead time where we had good preparation for EMA and some of those folks that were going to be immediate call takers and people that were going to be immediate responders that all set at the table and developed a pretty robust plan for how we were going to initiate action for flood mitigation and at least immediate flood response from an emergent an emergency plan kind of approach. What questions do you have for us? I guess, Chris and Linda, you were on the meeting as well, so we got nothing but good response and some good refinement document as well. First time that we've tried this virtual EOC where we were able to electronically share information from all the ESFs live and in a timely manner that way, so it seemed to work out very, very well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, good representation from everybody, had a lot of input, even on that meeting, so.
Anybody else? Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item five, minutes approved for March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a couple of hearings today, we have a bid opening on seal coating for FY twenty, and we also have an ordinance seventy-seven dash two-two-four, we'll get to those two shortly. Okay, item seven is a consent agenda that's to be made with a single resolution, so move.
Second.
Any questions, comments on the consent? Roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, contracts and agreements, this is a resolution, the contract extension between Blackout County and Wright Price, O'Wine, Iowa for office supplies, this originally was bid June twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. This will be an extension of July first, two thousand and nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So.
Second.
I think you saw the memo on that from Dana. Okay, roll call, please.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Item B is a resolution, agreement between Blackout County First Judicial, Fifth Street Court of Correction Services, DCS, for the purpose of providing supervision and inmate housing for prisoners who otherwise be placed in Blackout County Jail. I believe this is one we have every year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this one? Then, roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Item C is a resolution, termination of current agreement between Blackout County and On-Site Information Destruction, now known as Shredit USA, for document shredding services, be approved, recommended by Rory Givin.
So moved.
Second.
What you got, Rory?
Morning, Board, Rory Givin, Maintenance Superintendent.
Morning.
The previous company, On-Site, was recently bought out by a company called Shredit. The reason we're asking to terminate this agreement is Shredit is not able to meet all the the language in the existing contract, so we're asking to terminate that contract and allow us to take that out for bid.
What aren't they able to meet?
What they're not able to meet is the existing or the previous On-Site charged per pound. The current company now charges per trip. And so, what they've been doing in the meantime is taking an average of what we have paid in the past or what we have had for poundage in the past, and that's what we've been getting billed. We've been fairly, we haven't seen that big of an increase in the last month, and that's about how long that we've been dealing with this. But we do foresee problems moving forward, so that's again why we're asking to terminate this contract. Technically, they're not meeting the the way the RFP was originally drafted.
So what's your plan?
Uh, we're gonna take it out for bid and bring it back to the board.
What are we gonna do in the meantime?
Uh, we'll continue using Shredit and pay per trip. And we do have an RFP ready to go, so we do anticipate a pretty quick turnaround on this.
Suppose you have that on the agenda today? The RFP approval.
We just wanted to make sure we get through this step first.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little? Yes.
Okay, item nine is other business discussion, possible for action. This is for a sculpture outside the courthouse in honor of men and women in Blackout County who helped pass Nineteenth Amendment, allowing all citizens the right to vote, no matter their sex, requested by Waterloo Nineteenth Amendment Centennial Committee. Please state your name and address, please.
Good morning, I'm Maureen White, two-three-zero-three Greenwood Avenue, Cedar Falls.
I'm Barbara Brown, thirty-eight-twenty Hillside Drive, Cedar Falls.
Okay.
Morning.
Morning, thank you for this opportunity to provide information for the board regarding the Nineteenth Amendment Centennial Committee and our proposal for artwork in commemoration of the one-hundredth anniversary, which will occur in two thousand and twenty. Barbara and I are both members of a statewide committee called the Nineteenth Amendment Centennial Commemoration Committee, which represents about twenty-five organizations and institutions that has met for well over a year to plan activities and events in two thousand and twenty. Those events are in recognition of the over-seventy-year campaign to gain the right for women to vote. The theme for this statewide campaign is Hard Won, Not Done. Our Cedar Falls Waterloo Committee is composed of members representing organizations listed on the February twenty-eighth letter that was sent to you. Our goal as a committee is to place the sculpture in Cedar Falls and one in Waterloo. The sculptures would lean toward a more abstract representation of women rather than a realistic representation of a particular woman. In Cedar Falls, the Cedar Falls Women's Club, which is located near City Hall, Overman Park, and the Cedar Falls Historical Society has already committed to placement of a commemorative sculpture outside their Victorian-era house that would complement the style of their particular structure. The Waterloo Women's Club would own, ensure, and maintain the artwork. In Waterloo, we've been working with the committee that includes Kent Schenkel from the Waterloo Center for the Arts, Paul Hudding, the Waterloo Public Arts Committee, Billy Bailey from the Grouse Museum, Dan Perry and Tom Stancliff, who are in the UNI Art Department and also work with the Cedar Falls Public Arts Committee, are providing advice and assistance. The Waterloo Public Art Committee has endorsed this particular project proposal. We've explored a number of potential locations in Waterloo and determined that the courthouse would be an ideal location for this particular sculpture because a large number of people are in and out of the courthouse on a daily basis. The auditor and elections office are located here, which of course is an obvious link to the whole idea of voting. There's a green space suitable for a large sculpture. And with the redevelopment that's going on in the nearby neighborhoods, there likely will be an increase in foot traffic in addition to the cars going by the courthouse. The artwork for the courthouse location would ideally be a sculpture appropriate for the architecture of this particular building, and it would likely be in a range of eight to ten feet tall and would ideally have nearby seating, landscaping, and lighting. On March twelfth, I spoke with Rory Givin regarding logistical issues related to placement of the sculpture on the courthouse grounds. After our discussion, it appeared that green space would be preferable to placement on the wide sidewalk on the front side of the building, and he will have additional input as we have this discussion. As far as projected cost, some of that was outlined for you in the letter that was sent to you, that I'll just review, we anticipate a concrete sculpture pad with a stainless steel sculpture eight to ten feet tall at a cost of approximately ten to fifteen thousand dollars. We prefer stainless steel because of the low maintenance and the lower initial cost. The cost of construction of the concrete pad sculpture installation and a ten percent set aside for maintenance is included in our estimate, although county staff and equipment could assist with the installation and that would decrease some of the cost. Lighting for the sculpture is not included in our estimate but would be preferable because of safety that it would provide for the piece. Solar lighting would be a lower-cost option. Landscaping is not figured in our cost. Insurance would be the responsibility of the owner of the piece. As far as ownership, we anticipate that the sculpture would become the property of Blackout County, and if at any point in time in the future the piece was to be removed from the courthouse property, then the city of Waterloo would most likely want first refusal on ownership of the piece. As far as fundraising is concerned, as I stated, we estimate the cost would be about ten to fifteen thousand dollars for this particular location. For the Cedar Falls piece, we're looking at about five thousand dollars. Our goal is to raise twenty-five thousand dollars total, and we would be sending letters to potential donors asking for gifts for the project as a whole, rather than asking for donations specifically for Cedar Falls or specifically for Waterloo. The committee would aim to raise thirty to fifty percent of the money needed before asking artists to submit a proposal. And possible donors would include members of the organizations that are represented on the committee, the Gaming Association, and a number of other organizations, Community Foundation, and so forth. For the gaming grant, if we were to get one from them, we would need to raise fifty percent of the cost before they would award a grant. The group decided that the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa would be the best to receive donations for the projects if they are willing to do so. And we would like to do that because then it would be possible for the donors to possibly have a tax deduction for their donation. As far as the artist selection process, Tom, Dan, and Kent would help in identifying sculptures who would work at the price level and the scale that we're talking about. They would help arrange for artists to do the work in facilities that you and I, if the artists wish to do that. Tom and Dan will help with soliciting proposals from artists, including drafting information that would go to the artist, and they have boilerplate language that is typically used in this kind of a situation. The Nineteenth Amendment Committee and the Board of Supervisors would select the final design from among the proposals. Sculptors are typically expected to provide their studio supplies, labor, transportation, installation at their own expense as part of their payment, and then if the city and county were to help with the installation, that would help reduce some of the expense for the artist. The artists may wish to give input regarding lighting and landscaping near the sculpture, but that could be determined at a later time. For our timeline for the installation of the piece, we would aim for a dedication on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty, which is Women's Equality Day. If the artwork is not ready at that time, the next option would be sometime prior to the election in two thousand and twenty, although we would want to avoid the immediate time period right around the election because of all the attention that would be focused rightly so on the election itself. So, we would be happy to take any questions you might have.
Rory, I think it's probably important to hear from you first, the Board. Obviously, we've had numerous requests over the years for various outside-inside memorials.
Yeah, my, just to kind of go back, and my brief discussion with Maureen was primarily focused on just location at this point. I indicated to her, the first step obviously is come to the Board, discuss what it is that you want to do. My input at this point would be a preference if it was to move forward the location on the courthouse grounds. For obvious reasons, we, I was opposed to placing this on the sidewalk, the main sidewalk, which goes out towards Fifth Street. That is our egress, evacuation for the building. My concerns were just, you know, this being in the way of that and potentially projects moving down the road as we are, that's one of our main entrances that we use to bring equipment in and such, so again, my brief conversation with Maureen was, my preference would be on the grass area on either side, probably more so closer to the mulberry, so you catch intersection. So that's about as far as our conversation went with that. Now, to answer your question, Tom, in the past, we have had requests, we've had requests for memorial stones, we've had requests for plaques. Looking back at those, it's been pretty consistently not approved, just, I think at some point it was talked about setting a precedence and not, you know, not being able to grant everybody's wishes to place whatever they felt.
I think we had a request for a statue too, a few years ago.
Yeah.
Statue of Liberty.
Liberty, I don't know how tall it was.
You were explaining that, that was before my time, but yeah, I've heard that as well, that that was a request at that.
It's like the one that's over at Memorial Hall, same size.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And why was that turned down, do we know?
I, there were some monies involved in it from the county, that the county didn't feel that was proper spending. I thought we had a liability concern at that time also with the statue. I don't know if anybody checked with our insurance carrier. Do you know, Rory?
I don't believe anybody has checked, at least that I know of.
I think it's important, maybe we have Dana do that, now that we know what the plan is. See what they have to say about it and so forth, and.
Again, our conversations were primarily location, lighting, preferences such as that, landscaping, we did touch on that, we're hoping to dive into some landscaping with the courthouse in the near future, so we talked a little bit about landscaping.
You know, we've tried everything over on that corner of Flowers and had people take care of it, and just for some reason, things don't work out on that corner.
I think some of it was maintenance, wasn't it? I think having staff, even, we thought some of our outdoor staff now that was out there might help somewhat.
Yeah, the, we did, we transplanted a tree over in that area. Unfortunately, that tree did not survive, I don't think I would put that on us, but it was one of those fifty-fifty shots that we took.
Do we have sidewalk there too that needs replaced, sunk or something?
The, there are a few areas on the main sidewalk leaving the courthouse. All of the perimeter sidewalk has been repaired or replaced. That happened last summer, actually.
I think this is just a really fantastic idea. I'm a big fan of public art and a huge fan of voting rights too, and maybe this sets a new precedent, but the Nineteenth Amendment was a new precedent too, and I think it's it's worth honoring that here at the courthouse, and I just appreciate all the work that's being done. This looks like it's gonna be a very minimal cost for the county, I can't see that insurance costs would be that high for a statue that was constructed for under fifteen thousand dollars, it's not gonna change insurance that much. And so I think this is just really fantastic, and I'm ready to take action on it.
I think it's always wise, Chris, to check with our insurance carrier before making any moves, that's just common sense. It's not that big of a deal, it's a phone call. I'm not so sure she didn't say he's in the building next week for their monthly meetings, so I think that's what we probably should do. I, it's a good thing for me too, I think it's a great idea, but you're right. We've turned down quite a bit, and a lot of it's from the state upstairs, and this is probably gonna open the door, it just determines how many plaques and statues you want in the courthouse.
Well, I reiterate what Chris said, though, I think there couldn't be a better reason for doing one than this particular event, and there was a lot of work. You've already answered so many of the questions, I can't believe all the things you've addressed already that were possible questions for us on this, but I'm, I would use the word, I guess, too excited about it, just because not only does this add for our property, I think, and putting something on our property in this great addition, but for downtown Waterloo, we're talking about walkable cities and having more walking done downtown and making things more attractive. I, yeah, commend you for the efforts that you've gone to this, and thank you for selecting Blackout County, quite honestly.
You have a problem about checking with the insurance?
I, I don't, I don't expect it to be any different than any of our other insurance, that it would be something we'd be responsible for in our building, but if you think there'd be a particular cost for that.
I have no idea, I just know traditionally it's easier to check with insurance or legal first and then do it second, rather than jumping into something. It's really up to the Board, really.
I know, it's not the same level, but years ago, we wanted to put the helicopter that ended up in Cedar Falls at the Amets at Memorial Hall, and it was turned down by the city because of insurance purposes. And I know it's a different situation, but still, you know, you know, there is insurance, insurance concerns that I can understand. It depends on what the sculpture looks like too, we don't know what the sculpture looks like.
I'm assuming, though, if we check with insurance this week, next week, having this on as an agenda item would be fine too, you just wanted a response, I think, to coming before the Board.
Has Waterloo, have they made any decision, or did you say one's going over to Waterloo too?
No.
Cedar Falls Women's Club.
Oh, the Women's Club.
And indeed, they wanted on their front lawn, they were one of the first women's groups in the United States and certainly in Iowa.
Sure.
And as far as insurance is concerned, I'm Chair of the Cedar Falls Public Art Committee, and the pieces that you see in Cedar Falls that have happened in the last twenty years are the Cedar Falls Collection, and they're under the insurance of the city of Cedar Falls. And the only time when you really get an expense is when someone vandalizes a piece, and at this point, we have not had that happen in twenty years, so. But that's not to say that.
No.
That wouldn't. Yeah. That was.
And that's another reason that we're not doing a human form, Vandal seem to like to vandalize human forms, so.
It's kind of a wild area, sitting right there in the middle of two crossing streets.
And the Sheriff's Department.
And a big old jail right across the street.
A lot of cops in the area, yeah.
And attorneys.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that you've put into, like, potential designs and the experts from the community that you've involved in this. This is a mid-century modern building, and so, the fact that you're pursuing an abstract design is really appropriate for the area, and I appreciate that.
So what we'll do is, if it's the Board's preference, we'll have Dana check with insurance, make sure Dana has the information that you kind of spied us today. And I'm sure we'll have whatever we need for information, that we can put this back on the agenda next week.
And once the design is established, we'll have the ability to review it.
Sure.
In fact, we will send out the RFPs to a wide range of sculptors and and then you and us, our committee, will go over the submissions and decide which one we like. And then we usually, in Cedar Falls, we usually bring in the artist, usually pick the top three and bring them in and talk to them about the piece so that they know and we know and all that kind of stuff, so.
And maybe too, if you get a chance, I'm sure Rory would mind that you could get with Rory and kind of go out there and look and give him some ideas, and he can give you some ideas where he thinks it should go and then get some input from you folks also.
Yeah, we'll have a good site plan.
Get all that taken care of ahead of time.
That's one thing I did, we did talk, was a site plan be provided to the Board of Supervisors at the end of this, so.
Thank you, ladies.
I'll just say one last thing, I'm celebrating the centennial year of my home, I own the historic Reuben Roth home in Highland, and as part of our centennial year-long celebration, I'd like to host a fundraiser for you, so, let's talk about that.
Sign up.
Yeah. You don't have to wait till next week for that.
Yes.
We do that, which is weekend.
Yes, yes.
Okay, is there any more information you'd like to tell?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll clean up this copy that I read from, I'll email it to Dana, and if you have any additions. And if you have any additional questions, then I'll just get in touch.
Maybe when you're leaving, just stick your head there and tell her you're going to do that and she'll be waiting for it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we'll hopefully have this back on next Tuesday. Okay, moving on to Item B. This is resolution ninety-day embargo authorizing weight restrictions on vehicles we operate in Blackhawk County, provided under three-two-one-point-two-three-six-eight. The code of Iowa, this will be effective March fourteenth for ninety days. I'll let, there's a few roads involved with that, I'll let Ryan talk about that, so.
Again, Kathy sent you guys an email here last week regarding these roads. These are four seal coat roads that we do have out in the county. One would be Barnes Ferry Road between Brandon and Carr Road, Waters Road between Highway fifty-eight and Platt Road, Yepsom between First Street and Westbrook. And then Miller Creek Road, four hundred feet west of two-eighteen, down to Cotta Road. And those are all embargoed at, would be embargoed at ten tons. The reason we are doing this year, we haven't done that in a few years, just given the soft conditions, the excess moisture that we're seeing in a lot of our roads, a lot of the gravel roads, have a lot more moisture in them this spring than they have in the past. We just want to ensure that we are maintaining the condition of those seal coat roads without, you know, heavy traffic would cause them to deteriorate a little faster given the structure that we have this year.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That information will be out there too, maybe on the web and so forth.
Yeah, we have notifications that we sent out. And then we also have a live map with all of our closures and the embargoes are listed on there.
How far back in the site we have, where this embargo starts, where you have a sign letting truckers know?
Most of these are all at, starting and ending at a mile. So, the signs are at the beginning and end of each mile.
What type of truck traffic are utilized in these, commercial or farming?
Right now, well, I mean, you might see some farmers out hauling, but given the conditions of the road, there isn't a bunch of them. Most agricultural traffic would be restricted. There is a few exemptions in the code for that. Fire EMS is the other exemption from this portion of the code.
And we've done this before.
Yes, we have.
Anything else, board? Ryan? Okay, do we have a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay, roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Liddle.
Yes. Okay, it's nine-thirty-three, we're going to be going to our hearing bid opening on the proposed FY twenty seal coating. Item, the first item is motion received, placed on file, proof of publication.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to close hearing after all written comments are received.
Second.
Do we have any written comments, Mr. Vayner?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry, thank you. Bids to be received, open and read. The deadline was three PM Monday, March eighteenth. Did they all meet the deadline?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
We received three bids, we'll go through.
What was the budget amount?
It's like our, our estimate was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred. I'd have to look up what our, that would have been within our budget.
How much was it?
Hundred and seventy-eight thousand, should be at the top of your right-hand corner of your guys' sheets. There shows the, our estimate.
Chris don't have it, it's right there.
All these did require a bid bond along with the bids. So, we do have a bid bond for this first one. It is from Blacktop Services of Humboldt, Iowa. Their bid is a hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. Next one is from Farnor Asphalt of Dubuque. They also do have the bid bond in place for the project. Their bid is two hundred and two thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. Two-zero-two.
Who had this last year?
Five-nine-seven-point-five-zero.
Any of these three?
Don't remember who we worked with last year.
Names don't ring a bell, honestly.
No, it's, these are usually the contractors that we see bidding. These are three that we did expect to see bids from. Last one is from Minats of Brooklyn, Iowa. Do have bid bond in place. Bids a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have a motion placed on file? So moved? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries? Thank you. Okay, moving on, again, it's nine-thirty-six. This is a hearing on proposed ordinance number seven-seven-dish-two-two-four, Berdratt rezoned, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Item one, the motion received, placed on file?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries?
Motion, we have the first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries? And this is a motion to close the hearing or written comments. Do we have any written comments on this one?
Oh, sir.
Seth?
Okay, yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission had its regular meeting on February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, reviewed the request by Jonathan Leslie Brundet to rezone two-point-six-nine acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District to allow for the construction of one new single-family home north of seven-two-three-three Wagner Road, which is approximately twelve-hundred feet north of the West Bennington Road and Wagner Road intersection. The request, this basically just a request to rezone two-point-six-nine acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District. It was moved by Fezemeyer and seconded by Wertz to approve the request to rezone two-point-six-nine acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to build a new single-family home. Motion to approve carried three-two with Sage and SAC voting to deny the request. SAC and Sage were just simply concerned about the location being too close to existing farm ground and potential issues that could be caused by spraying farm chemicals so close to a proposed home. The parcel contains two-point-six-nine acres and has been zoned A Agricultural District since the adoption of zoning warrants in nineteen eighty-two. The rezoned area is currently zoned Agricultural District, consists of vacant agricultural land. Surrounding area consists of rural home and farmland as well. Surrounding area is zoned A Agricultural District to the south, north, east and west. And then there's also Agriculture Residential to the east and Agriculture District to the west and Agriculture District to the north. The rezoned area is designated as agricultural on the feature land use map. And surrounding area is also designated as agricultural in the north, south, east and west. Now, the area to be rezoned is located in the flood hazard area. The site had a land evaluation score of seventy-two and least a score of two-seventeen, which just indicates agricultural moderate, moderate agricultural value. The rezoned request, yeah, this is proposing a rezone, two-point-six-nine acres from A to AR in order to build new single-family home on the property. A rezoned request at seven-four-one-four Wagner Road to rezone two acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agriculture Residential District, approximately a hundred and thirty feet east of the proposed rezoned area, was approved by the Board of Supervisors on June eighteenth, two thousand two. And the minor plat was approved by the Board of Supervisors on June eighteen, two thousand two as well. The proposed rezoned area is not located within the Blackhawk County Land Use Overlay District. Hager, with the Technical Review Committee, Hager noted that the site had a moderate lease score and Brennan stated that land was already platted. Stephen questioned the rezoning of the western portion of the lot. Brennan indicated that homes are quieter when they're placed in the rear of the lot as opposed to the next to the roadway. Technical Review Committee did not have any concerns regarding this request.
Was there anybody there in opposition?
Um, there was a couple people that opposed the request.
Or were just in the, they were there, but they actually opposed this project?
Yeah, I think, I don't know, I can kind of, I think, one discussed with the applicant later and was okay. And I guess there was just one that was against it.
Okay, go ahead.
How come they're building back and not up on the front?
I can have the applicant.
Let's have the applicant. Your name and address, please.
Good morning, everybody. My name's John Berndret. I live at one-hundred Parkview Road, Denver, Iowa, Bremer County. And so, my wife and I are proposing to build a new house. We drive that road every day, went up for sale pretty quick. We made an offer on it the next day. Why are we proposing back there, Mr. White, is because if you look at the lay of the land, we shot great elevations. You can see, I would say, the, I'm going to call it the southeast corner of that entire lot is the high point. There, you can see kind of in that front corner, we do get a little bit of water that comes out of that ditch and across that land. So, we've proposed to push it all the way back. One, privacy. Two, the sound of Wagner Road is a fairly busy, heavily traveled road. And also because I don't want water in my basement, so.
What's the building up in front there?
Uh, the previous owner, the current owner, has a small little outbuilding on the property currently. It's like a thirty-by-forty-five pole shed that sits there.
That's the road there.
Correct.
What's the closest, what's the closest fire department?
Oh, that's Denver Fire District, that's Denver Fire, Denver EMS, Denver Schools. It's a Cedar Falls address with Mid-American Energy. So, and I actually did, we're looking at, I've spoke, I've got all the numbers. We spoke to the Rural Water out of Newton. We propose, and we're going to bring Rural Water in all the way from C fifty-seven, about three-quarters of a mile south. And I actually asked that, because I do work for the fire department here in Waterloo. I asked him, what was the cost to add a fire hydrant right there in front of my house? We wouldn't want that, right? About forty-two-hundred dollars. So, I do know the fire chief in Denver, I'm going to run it by him to see if we can take it to the township board to see if they were interested in, you know, going on the forty-two-hundred dollars to put, you know, it'd be the closest water within eight, nine miles anywhere around. So, I figured while we're doing construction.
To your benefit.
Yeah, you bet, for the whole community and all the neighbors involved, so, that's correct, so. And for Mrs. Leyland, there were two people that spoke in opposition at the county supervisors meeting. One was the gentleman that lives to the house right to the south. And afterwards, I think it was in construction, there's a lot of people that are curious and they have questions and concerns about what's going on. And I did speak with him afterwards, I addressed every one of his questions. He was super excited and it was just kind of nice to meet the guy next door, you know, get people informed. I think that's really what people want. There was a gentleman who was opposed to it, Mr. Brent Judisch, who lives right on the Blackhawk. We'll say the Waterloo city limits and Blackhawk county limits on Dunkerton Road, he's a farmer. He does farm the land to what I would say would be the north and the west of the property. He has concerns, they do spray aerial, and he thought the house was going to be too close to the fence line. So, I did my due diligence coming into today, thinking Mr. Judisch might be here. Mr. Judisch's personal home, who I've worked on doing construction, sits two-hundred-and-fifty feet off his own farm field. So, I figured if it's good for him, it's probably okay for me, so.
So, you're going to move from Bremer County to Blackhawk County?
I am, and what we're looking at doing is, to be real honest, what are we all interested in? It's proposed values, what are we going to build, you know, the tax base? So, we're proposing, we currently have, it's been already appraised, we're looking at adding a seven-to-eight-hundred-thousand-dollar property sitting right there today. So, I don't know what the value of the land taxable value is today, but I know that we're going to be over seven. I don't think we'll be over eight, I sure hope not.
Seth, what was the vote again on that?
It was three to two.
Three-two.
Three-two. Okay, has anybody else got any questions?
No.
You got anything for the board?
I appreciate the time today.
You're not concerned about this, right?
No, sir, I'm not concerned at all. I live, I do live outside, I don't live in Denver. I live in rural Bremer County currently.
You have children?
I do, sir. Yep, I have two left at home, so.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I get a second on that closing the hearing grant?
I don't know.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries? Okay, item four is a resolution to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Liddle.
Yes. Okay, item five is ordinance to adopt, the ordinance amending, the ordinance number thirty-six as amended.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Liddle.
Yes. Okay, ordinance passed. Thank you, everybody, for that information. Okay, item ten, enter parts or information from the board.
Just send our condolences out to the family of Jerry Urselins, who passed away last evening.
Honest report, I know it's something that the state legislature took out of our hands, but I'm giving a presentation tonight in Independence at the library about the need to raise the minimum wage federally and at the state local, state level and to restore our local control over it. And I'm going to keep doing that across the state until no family that works full-time has to live in poverty.
Go get them. Okay, anybody else? Accept motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.